Start this show. This is a, this is some meeting to iron out problems that occurred in the public hearing last month for the wetlands ordinance. The public is welcome to attend this. We will not be taking public input. I, the Western Conservation Commission asked me if it was okay if they attended and I said yes provided everybody on the committee is okay with it. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, what, I asked the Webster Conservation Commission and they did a great job of putting together what they think are the issues and their resolution to it. And there was five, five issues they identified. And I think they may coincide with some, somebody, some of our issues.
Yeah.
And so what I'd like to do is go through them one by one. And at the end of that, if there are any issues that you feel didn't get addressed, in addition to this, we can talk about those also. Is that, is that agreeable?
Yes.
Replacement of septic systems. The draft ordinance requires a CUP. And that stands for-
Conditional use permit.
Conditional use permit. So we'll see that quite a bit. For septic system replacement, the state already regulates this. And the WCC's recommendation is although the CUP requirement was meant to provide additional oversight of wetland protections to address the concerns, we recommend that the replacement of an existing septic system within the district that is approved under the install, and installed in accordance with all state rules and regulations be permitted use. This will accomplish, this will be accomplished by deleting section 7A dot 7 and adding replacement of an existing septic system within, in the district that is approved under the installed in accordance with all statutes, rules, and regulations. So basically what-
All state statute.
Yeah. All state statute. So basically what this is saying is, get rid of the-
Page 14. It's all in the back.
Get rid of the wording of replacement.
I mustn't have that.
And adding, and adding it's okay to replace existing under state law. So, yeah. So is there any discussion on this issue?
So what you're saying is more or less, anybody that has to replace their septic for whatever reason, more or less the town will just be behind the fact that you have to get a septic design and you have to, you have to follow their rules and they get inspected even, and the state will handle that.
Yeah, basically the state regulates-
So at no point do we step in as a town to-
Right.
Be thinking we're gonna say, well-
Right.
Okay.
Chris Shaefer, Tyler Road. We, it's our zoning, the town steps in in the form of our zoning regulations. So insofar as the zone of the town does regulate the distance of septic from wetlands already, we thought we'll just let the town and state together go ahead and take care of this.
Okay. Number two, Esther and Colleen.
Isabel, I have another.
Uh, yes.
Isabel Brentonall, Call Road. Just a clarification, Marla, in response to your question, for the purposes of this ordinance, the Wetlands and Watershed Protection Ordinance, what we recommended was making replacement of septic systems a permitted use, no longer, we had it requiring a CUP and we're recommending that we take that out.
Thank you. Okay. Number two, storage of petroleum products. And there's two, two individuals addressed this in the public hearing. Concern, some expressed concern that the ordinance would not allow storage of gas cans in, in existing legal non-conforming structure within the district. We believe that use is grandfathered and may continue. Recommendation, we recommend that this restriction on petroleum products in the district remain in the ordinance as written because it will apply only to new structures and uses. Is there any discussion on this one?
So if it's grandfathered, it's, they're okay, but if you put up a new structure, it wouldn't be? Is that how I read this?
Well, yeah, I, I-
So, I, I mean, you gotta have gas cans and oil cans and stuff kicking around for whatever you do. I, I, actually, I think we probably should take that and scrap it right completely out of it because it's, it's kinda confusing when you look at that. So that's what I think.
Any other comments?
We should just scrap that part of it.
Where's the language in the ordinance? I guess that's the-
I guess my feeling is, the way the ordinance is written, it, it states restrictions on petroleum products. And what we should be doing is saying, these are the permitted ways you can store it. In other words-
How about like somebody that's already got like a, I mean, when you drive down Close Pin Bridge Road, you got people with tanks, oil tanks, right side their house.
Yeah.
What are you gonna do about that? I mean, that stays as is, correct?
Right.
So like if somebody else, you know, they start adding on down there, which they're doing it, they still gonna be able to take and keep their oil tanks, the heat system?
Yeah.
And that. And then it's like, but, but if you were to build a new structure, you know, and you get the permits to do, put up a new house, you were within the rights of all, you know, doing what you're doing. It kinda, and, and you had a shed that was still in the means, you gonna be able to store gas and oil?
Well, to my mind, it's, it's, it's a-
It's kinda.
Well, there's two issues here. One is, it's a political issue, okay? People stand up and say, oh, they don't let you do petroleum, right? It's a political issue. People, people latch onto that. It's one of the easier ones to latch on to, I think. And the second is, the, it's, it's, as you, as you said, it's kinda squirrely-
Yeah.
...the definition is. And I would like to either nail it down and get rid of it, I think.
It would be less confusing to people because people, they see this and it's like they get all-
Yeah. They get all bent out of shape.
They are getting bent out of shape.
And I think the question is-
And the thing of it is, it's like if you're trying to get this to go through and somebody sees that, it's gonna draw, it's just gonna throw it right haywire and you're done.
Yeah, I was just gonna make that point. That's, it's the political side of this that I think you have to look at, not so much as the-
And, and another point, okay? So here I got a pickup truck and I got, not one, but I got two fuel tanks in the back of that, okay? I got wetlands, I, and I use that thing. It sits in my yard. Sometimes it's got 200 gallons of fuel in it. Or maybe more than that. What am I gonna do with that if I was to, if I, and, and just say like, I move into my mother's house down on Blackwater, on Tyler Road, and I'm out, we got quite a bed of land that goes up the side of the river, and what if I wanna do something there? What?
What I, the people that spoke on last month, they, they were mostly homeowners worried about, you know-
Gas cans.
Having a five gallon gas can.
But then again, if they're grandfathered, they shouldn't be bothering them.
Yeah, but if they built a new house and did all their permits and did, got it right, you know? Where are you gonna be?
You gotta have gas to run your snow blower, you gotta have gas to run your lawnmower.
Generators?
Generators?
Yeah.
I suppose if it's stored in a, in a approved container.
What's that?
They would not be building a new house in the district.
Don't say that.
I mean, that's the point of this.
Yeah. I, I get it, but say if I was to build a new house on the Blackwater River and I did all the permits, you know? What, how, how, what happens then? And I got a pickup that's got 200 gallons of fuel in the back of it, what are you doing?
But is that all in the district? That, that's the point of this.
Right. But if, but if you're, if, if I just, I'm just saying that if I built a new house on the river and I had a pickup truck with 200 gallons in it and I, you know, the house is gonna be within the limits, but what if the truck is too close to the water or something like that? And it could happen, will happen, more than likely.
Uh, Chris, do you wanna add?
Yeah, I, I do. Addie, you know, with, with the kind of property, using your example, it would be very easy if you wanted to put a shed for your petroleum products, just move it outside of the buffer, move it outside. That would be typical.
I, I-
It would be, I mean, it would be very easy on a property like that.
I get, I get that, okay? All right, build a shed. But what about this truck that if I wanna take and keep it within the distance-
What don't you say?
Well, what if I want to? You're taking my right of way as far as-
No, no, Addie, no, no.
No, it is taking the right of way. If I got a truck with 200 gallons of fuel in it and I wanna drive it within 25 feet of that river and we already have a road going up the side of Blackwater River-
No, it's not a road.
Well, it is. I guess if you really took the old road that we have on the property, there's a road and I could drive right up there. And I think if you ever walked it, you're gonna see the old car that was out there. And so that's what you've got.
And so, you know, we're proposing this wetland, this wetland package so that everybody will understand how critically important it is to keep-
Well, they, they-
I mean, just let me speak though.
Yeah.
How important it is to keep pollutants simply away from a really valuable resource like the Blackwater. And when you have options, like you do in your family, of a good amount of land, it would seem a fairly easy task.
Yeah, but it's, it's the point of what, and it's not that I'm gonna do anything wrong with it, it's the point of the freedom of what I, we got that land and it's like you tell me what I'm-
So you're already grandfathered in, that's the point, isn't it?
Not if I build a new house.
The road that you're talking about?
The road is there, but if I build a new house right near the river and I take my truck and I-
I don't think you could be-
What's that?
I don't think you could build a house right near the river.
Well, I can get pretty close.
Well, the way, the way this is written-
Yeah.
Section 7C, no storage of petroleum products. So we're talking about storage. I don't think having petroleum on your truck is storage.
Well, it could sit on there for a week.
Yeah, but it, it's not a, I don't think-
Well, whatever. I just, I just think that's-
It sounds a bit of a-
It's not a hazard, it's not a hazard to the wetlands unless you have an accident with it, right?
Right. There you go, if you had an accident.
Right.
Could have.
Could have. You could have an accident right out front here.
Yeah, you could. Yeah.
Could happen right on the bridge going over Blackwater.
That's correct.
So, yeah, I, 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 I'm in agreeance with him in the sense that, you know, if, when they're storing their petroleum, you know, it's in gas cans, it's in, you know, it's not like they're out there dumping it on the ground.
Right.
So I don't know if there's a way to say it, that it just needs to be stored properly, you know, and, you know, so that it leaves like a little bit of room for if somebody-
Doing what you need to do.
Yeah, if somebody does do something maliciously, then we have our, our-
That's a different story.
We have the right to kind to, to, to do, we need to do as a town to protect our water, but otherwise containment of, in a, in a truck or containment in a gas can or containment in anything, it's contained at that point. That's my feeling.
Okay. What are we gonna do here? Does, does somebody wanna make a motion?
Well, I don't think we have language. It sounds to me like you wanna strike it and I don't think that's appropriate.
Well, then we gotta figure out how to reword it so it's not having to go get a permit to put up a fuel bunker to put fuel in it, you know?
Within the district.
We should-
We're always back to that, that it's within the district.
Could you make a motion to, to reword it to say that any petroleum products need to be stored properly?
That-
And within, within containment, you know, like you go to-
That would be, that would be a better idea to properly store it.
But how many people will do that?
What's that?
How many people will do that?
If there is, then we don't.
How many times have you seen somebody with a five gallon, one gallon plastic milk bar, milk, milk bar, we're getting gas?
When you run out-
That's not a proper potato. So.
Now?
I think, I think that what we're, what we're, I get, I get where they're coming from is we don't wanna see somebody out there, you know, polluting. Not us, do we?
Right. We, we're not gonna pollute, but just-
But, but with that being said, we don't wanna be, you know, telling people every minute what they can or cannot do and to put it in and make sure it's stored properly. And I-
Well, there, there's, right now it's under prohibited uses and activity C under here, you can take a look at this. Up above that is permitted uses. And I think what we should do is add something in permitted uses, saying something like-
It's permitted.
What you're saying, yeah.
Now, we've also got in that same one, chemical fertilizers, pesticides, I thought we did something with that not too long ago. I thought we got rid of that part of that.
It should be gone, the agriculture part of that.
The only thing that, only thing that should be in there is the storage of petroleum products or hazardous chemicals. That's all that should be in there.
I would say, I mean, as far as the fertilizer stuff, you know, people, they keep that in their garage or something, whatnot, you know, lime or whatever. It's like, it's not just the farmer that has the stuff, it's everybody has fertilizer, if you fertilize your lawn or whatever and, uh-
I see no reason why we can't leave it to woody just the way it is and move it up to permitted uses.
Yeah. So that'd be a permitted use, storage of petroleum products. Make it easy.
So the storage of petroleum products or hazardous chemicals or materials-
Yeah.
Should be moved up to permitted uses in that sentence.
Same, that's why you just-
And the sentence, uh, prohibited after that is always supposed to be gone.
Yeah. Well, but we wanna add, you know, approved containers or something like that.
Yeah. Cause part of this is to, if something's going wrong in people, you know, it's, it's something that we can do something about.
Correct.
The one reason they're behind some of these wetland regulations then, what the state already has in place, is so as a town, we can say, hey, you can't be storing that in your grandfather's, great-grandfather's milk jug, right? Something to that, to that case. Am I wrong? Is what we're-
Chris?
I think, you know, going back to what Kathy was suggesting about the purpose of this ordinance is to make peo-, first of all, to make people aware that using chemical pesticides and fertilizers, particularly within that 50-foot boundary between it and, and the wetlands, can pose a threat to the wetlands. We know that it does. We know that it is one of the primary ways that wetlands become polluted. And so, you know, within what we're calling the district, which is that zone that's, you know, that we're trying to protect here, we're really trying to protect, you know, the buffer. We'd like to have buffers, you know, between, between say the Blackwater River and somebody's yard so that what-
Yeah, I, I-
I'm sorry?
Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Um, so, you know, this, it's, what you're about to make a decision on here, moving something from a prohibited use, which we really regard as a very serious thing, so does DES. This is not something that we just thought up. You know, we, we canvassed what DES was saying and we canvassed what other towns have done. And this is right there with prohibited uses, to have that stuff stored, not in your truck. You know, we're not talking about people driving around in trucks, we're talking about storage. And, and the thing that is worrisome here is that none of us know what every one of us is doing in terms of a storage shed that doesn't leak, a roof that's maintained, maybe a, you know, flooring that doesn't leak. These are all things that obviously we can't control, but we can control how we raise public awareness about the importance of really containing these things. So that's really the spirit of this.
Well, I think, I think we, we all under-
Yeah, we get what you're saying.
We all understand what you're saying. The problem is that people latched on to that petroleum products, okay? There were two people that were, spoke up about it and, and they're talking to other people in town, they're saying, that wetland, you can't store some gas in your town, you know, you want more gas in there. That's the problem right there.
That, that is what you're gonna run into, but you, I mean, if you want this to work, you're gonna have to give a little bit.
Oh.
That, that's what's gonna have to happen. Other words, when people get on that computer, they see what you're doing, it just sends them right off into a bad one. And, and I, you, you may not see it, but it's out there. And you will face the real opposition if you wanna go with a happy medium of trying to get this so it fits to you within reason. Other words, it's not gonna happen. I can tell you that right now. You only see the people that you see or know, but if you get out into the real strip, of everybody in town, you're irritating them.
Well, I-
Whether you like it or not, that's what's happening. If you want this wetlands thing to go and try to be, you know, try to get it so it's, it will work, so people won't be upset, we gotta strike up midway to make-
That's what we hope to do with these recommendations.
That, that's what we're trying to do, but I'm just saying, that's what has to happen.
Let's back up a little bit. I, David?
So I just wanna comment quickly on that concept of giving a little bit. And the difference between completely prohibited to completely allowed is not really kind of that halfway ground. And I'm not saying anyone should do one thing one way or another, but if I were trying to take the comments that had been made, the majority of it was, I can't keep gas for my snow blower or lawnmower.
Exactly.
So perhaps you could do something such as a, a five gallon prohibit, a five gallon minute in an approved container.
Yeah, permitted.
Or something of that nature.
Permitted is-
I'm sure some people will still absolutely hate that.
Yeah.
Especially if someone, you know, like myself, I've got a tractor that eats more than that, but, you know, it's, it's that kind of happy medium. I think that if you're trying to find a happy medium, that's a reasonable place to suggest to people.
Yeah, but the, the, you, you can't really limit it to a five gallon can. I got, I got six five gallon cans full of gas sitting in my shed at the house. Granted, I'm not near any wetlands, but say like if I was near a wetlands, you got a generator that you gotta take in the winter time if you're out of get, out of, if, if that thing, if you got 24 hours, five gallons ain't gonna be, what are you gonna do, run down and get five more? Doesn't work. And, and then, and then it's like your snow blower or say like you had a tractor that you plow your yard with or, you know, a long road going into the wetlands.
Wait, wait, Isabel.
I mean, some of this stuff we already took under, number five was agricultural uses?
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm not talking agriculture, I'm talking-
No, but some of the things you're mentioning, they are already covered there.
Say like if you lived on the end of Frost Lane and you gotta plow that road going in there, okay? No, I'm just saying because it has to happen, all right? Frost Lane, right side Blackwater River, is five gallons of gas gonna be pretty good to take and-
Well, let me back up a little bit. We're talking about a wetlands district, you know, that buffer.
Yeah, that would be in it.
We're not talking about-
That's, that would be-
The gas, the gas in your-
Wetlands District, Frost Lane.
Isabel, you wanna-
Just a reminder, don't forget that we're talking, that, that existing houses, structures, uses are grandfathered.
Yes.
This is going to apply to a new building.
Right.
Which is with, within, partly or wholly within the district.
Yeah.
And that's not going to affect you at this moment-
Not right-
Or those people on Frost Lane at this moment.
At this moment, but let's say like the right-hand side of that gets developed. It's not out of the question because that, that could happen. You got lots for sale and that there's a way, everything, there's a way to do it. You know, you could put three new houses on Frost Lane. Where are they gonna be? And some of them are within 100 feet of that river.
Mm-hmm.
What happens then?
David?
And to, to both of your points, I think the concept of grandfathering is great, but at the same time, while new houses and stuff are being developed and we've basically been told that five acre maximum, minimums for lots is not going to retain itself by New Hampshire, so we're probably gonna have to lower that. So we're likely going to have new developed lots within these areas. And the concept of being able to say, well, I have a generator that I can fuel during a storm and you can't possibly have that kind of a new development, that touches on that, that kind of issue.
Only, hmm.
So, but there may be ways to exception things, so, but it's, it's one of those things where you have to be really careful in how you word things.
So, we are talking about within the district, we are talking about a storage shed, we're talking about new people coming in and purchasing a piece of land, or maybe your son or daughter, whoever, purchasing a piece of land. They need to understand that living near a wetland has some responsibility. And, and all they have to do is put that darn storage shed outside the district, that's all. And there's room for that on the right side of Frost Lane. And everything else that's there is grandfathered. So, and, and if, and if it's, if they can't do it outside of the district, then they simply, is that a variance? They would seek a variance.
And chances are, are you gonna get that?
Well, it's the zoning board.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, chances are, are you gonna get that? I've been to the zoning board doing a subdivision and don't make out too good, so it all depends who you are at different times. Then there. Way before your time.
All right. Let's get back on topic here. What are we gonna do here? I sense, Kathy?
Well, I, I don't think we could take, what is it? We're talking about section 7B?
Yeah, right.
I don't think we could just take all of that and say that's all permitted.
Yeah, I don't think so. I think that's right. I don't-
I, I think you need to-
I would like to-
So, but I don't know what the further laws are on this of, I mean-
Well, I, I'm worried about what people grab on to those petroleum products.
Yeah.
And I wanna, I, as part of the sell for this, this wetland ordinance, I think we need to be specific that storing, storing petroleum products for personal use in approved containers is permitted at your house as long as it's not in the wetlands district.
That's what we're saying.
Does it ultimately apply to the district?
For new development, yeah.
Yeah, but it'll, right.
So-
Yeah, I still think that, I think you gotta be a little bit more careful with that language. I think, I think you, you know, like just with all the language you just said, but, you know, just like anything, people gotta follow the rules and the rules can be, you know, just as fair, as long as they're not, you know, doing like what we said, you know, dumping or, you know?
You're right.
Cause that's what you're trying, that's what you're trying to solve, you know?
The dumping thing, I mean, that, obviously, that's not gonna happen. You can't, that can't happen without a doubt, but the storage part of stuff is what-
But it's the proper storage. But it's the proper storage. Most people don't just intend to dump. It's that it's not stored properly and then there's a leak.
Yeah, I get it.
So that's what, so I don't know, what is that?
Yeah, you gotta be careful.
It's that language.
Right.
So right now, it says no storage of petroleum products that were hazardous, so that's what.
You gotta fix that.
Yeah, what I'm thinking is another sentence up in the permitted uses, sort of what I was just saying. Gasoline for personal use in approved containers at your house site, at your residence or garage, is approved outside of, you know.
Outside of what?
Outside the district.
But that's what we're saying.
But that's what this says, yeah.
That's what we're saying.
This only applies to the district. So that would automatically be the case currently.
Yeah, but I, the problem, we have a political problem here, and I'm trying to address it because what I'd like to do is, before we go into this public hearing, said, "We heard you, you know, we heard you issue about petroleum products and here's what we've done about that."
But, I'm sorry, you know, this section, permitted uses, is in the district, right? You're saying?
Oh, right, right.
You know what I'm saying? You can't just move it up there and say, "In the district."
Yeah, right, you're right.
And what, how do you say is that? Personal, you want it permitted in the district for personal use.
Personal use, or, yeah, I mean, so.
So that's kind, which is kind of different from what this says, so.
So what would your wording be? What would good wording be, Kathy? Unfortunately, you opened your mouth.
I, well, yes, well, no, but it's, it's.
You go ahead.
Well, yeah.
I mean, we can also look into it further a little bit, how to say it, if that's what you're thinking, but more or less. I just, every time you limit things, just like you're pointing out, you know, we wanna be careful that we don't wanna take people's rights away.
Right.
We do wanna protect our water. I mean, I want clean water.
Oh, you gotta do that, that's obvious.
But at the same token, you know, we don't wanna be the person running around going, "Oh, that guy's got a five gallon pail." Right next to it, "Oh, it's within that time, you know, with that space." You know, I just don't think that's, you know, your own land at that point, you know?
Yeah, the store.
That's why it's instant be stored properly.
It's really kinda.
Which the state probably has that anyways, but it should be stored properly.
I'm just looking at all the permitted uses.
And then that way, if something, if it's a town, let's, let me ask this question as a town, if we find that somebody's not storing it properly, then we have a right to say something, correct? Than having to go call DES and blah, blah, blah. We as a town and our guy that is, you know, he can go there and say, "Oh, okay, it's all right, they're storing it properly," or, "Oh my God, they're not," you know? And then we have a right to say something, correct? Isn't that part of what these are for?
Well, the selectmen are the final authority in town, all right? They can go, you have the authority to go there and say, you know, "You're not storing this right and you need to fix this."
Oh, I don't know if we do.
I don't think that, I don't think this board, or any member of this board, or any other board in town, has the right to go to a person's house in town if he's doing it wrong. It needs to go through proper channels.
Right.
And the enforcement body of this is a.
Enforcement, that's what I was trying to say, sorry, yes.
Is a select board.
Well, no, but there's also the enforced, the code enforcer that we just have taken on as a town.
Yeah, but he's taken, he's under your direction. In other words, you can.
If you direct him to go, then he goes.
I mean, otherwise, without that, you have the authority to go. Not the planning board, not the zoning board, but the selectmen have that authority.
Okay, I'm not online, oh, well, whatever. I'm not online.
I would like to say something else. This ordinance is also about prevention, prevention of problems. It is a lot easier to prevent the problem in the first place, assuming that people are law-abiding. This all assumes that people are law-abiding. Prevent the problem because if there's.
That's anywhere though. That's anything we do, really. Law, you know, law, people breaking the rules, you know? That's, that can happen at any time.
Well, and it does, unfortunately. And then it takes a lot of money, lawsuits, a lot of time, everything else to remedy. And so, you know, if we begin to cut into the ordinance a whole lot, that prevention thing is going to get, the strength of it is gonna get reduced. So we're just, you know, we're trying to prevent pollution into critical water bodies, level one water bodies and level two. And so if people really are interested, Abby, and they read the ordinance, if they read the ordinance, which is online and available to everybody.
Yeah, but we need, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, I was just gonna finish up by saying, and I know it's complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
But there are links on our website that take the ordinance to, down to basic language that anybody could understand.
Well, the problem is, people looked at this at the public hearing and they saw petroleum products and they went.
They wanted to.
Yeah.
Let's put this, let's put this in.
But, yes, but they have an impact in town. I mean, they're talking to other people.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm, what we need to do is sales, okay? We need to talk to people and say, you know, "This ordinance does not prohibit you from storing gasoline in your approved container in your house, okay?" That's the sales part of this thing.
Right, we're working on that.
Okay. I'm thinking, I'm thinking and see what you guys are thinking, but we should just not touch this, just let it go.
Yeah, that, what do you mean, leave it as is?
Yeah.
I think we should put something in the permitted uses that states, I'm just not sure how to word it, but that.
What's your idea?
Personal petroleum products, I don't know if we want.
Properly stored.
Properly stored.
Yeah.
It would be nice if we could point to a New Hampshire law or something within the provisions of this. I don't know what that is and I can't get online.
I know, it probably isn't one, is there?
I sort of looked at, I sort of looked at storage stuff, petroleum stuff and states such, I didn't, they talk about approved oil storage containers and stuff like that, but they didn't really mention.
Personal.
Personal gasoline storage.
Yeah.
Well, like a 55 gallon drum, there's rules and regulations we have to follow if you have one of those, yeah, yeah. They can, and you can get in a lot of trouble if you don't have them stored correctly, marked correctly.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and that's a state, that's a state ordinance.
All right, but to back to Kathy's point here, if we say you can storage this in your garage outside of the district, would that satisfy?
Would it moving as to permitted uses or leaving it there?
Well, the problem is permit, this permitted uses talks about in the district, okay? So what we're talking about is outside the district.
Okay.
And, I don't know, there isn't, there isn't a good spot in here for that. Yes?
So I guess the large question would be, other than grandfathered houses, properties, garages, barns, since we're talking about in the buffer district, would there ever be even an opportunity to have another building or structure that you could possibly put something like this in? Because it sounds to me like that wouldn't be the case because you couldn't build there in the first place.
Right, right.
So in that case, then this really, whether there's petroleum products allowed or not, doesn't actually change anything since there's no building to put it in. Is, am I reading this incorrectly?
No, that's how I interpret it. That is not what you were, you were saying.
I'm saying that if I built a new house on the Blackwater River.
That's, this is the, so I don't know how true that is, yeah.
So, and you wanted to, you know, I had to say like my pickup with 200 gallons of fuel is gonna be probably close to the water, maybe it won't be in the 50 foot or whatever it is, but it's still gonna be there. And then like storing gas and all of that, and you've got a house that you've just built, you're gonna have gas for your lawnmowers, your generators, your snow blowers, your tractors, fuel. You're gonna have more than just a five gallon can.
So, but my point here is that if you're building, you're not gonna be allowed to build within the buffer district in any way.
Right, yeah, but so what would the buffer district be on the Blackwater River, 100 feet?
Yep.
So you're still close to it with all this, with your gas.
But if you're outside of that 100-foot buffer, you're okay. And the question, so if, if, I'll close your hypothetical for a second. If you were to be able to be allowed to build within the district, which my reading of this says will never be possible, but if you were able to from variance or other reason, then not only would you have problems storing things like a gas can for your mower, you would also have problems with your fuel oil or your natural gas for your home heating.
Say like if you're working alongside the river with your pickup with your 200 gallons of fuel and that truck sits there for a week, what happens?
Hopefully, nothing.
Yeah.
But that's probably not a great idea.
Well, great idea or not, it still happens. I work beside the water all the time. It's not something that this is, you know, and anybody.
How do you think it applies to that?
Well, it probably doesn't, but it's just something that could probably show up down the road.
How about adding, no permanent or semi-permanent storage? I don't know. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to find a middle ground here.
Section 7B, no permanent storage, is that what we're saying, of petroleum products?
Permanent or.
Or semi-permanent.
So I guess my.
Or in-ground, in-ground.
Would actually be to the conservation folks who put this forward, in that if people can't build in this area in the first place, so they don't have a place to even try to store these products, why does that need to be in the ordinance at all?
Yeah.
No, no, we're trying to prohibit the use of these things within the buffer. But people have property and can build houses outside the buffer. And so these activities can occur outside the buffer. And so, you know, under permitted uses, you could say that everything needs to be properly stored, just the way it says under prohibited uses, but you can permit it outside the buffer if you think that that would help to make it more clear to people.
That's already permitted.
Yeah, outside the buffer, it would be already permitted.
But my point is that whether you say that petroleum products are prohibited or not in this ordinance, in effect, they are because you can't build a structure there to store it in in the first place.
Well, yeah, you can't build it in the buffer.
Right.
Isabel, did you have something?
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't think we know for a fact that no structure can be, no new structure could be built that's partly to fit in the buffer. I could imagine that happening, you'd have to get, you know, building permits and perhaps go for a variance, I don't know, but I could imagine that being possible, in which case it's important to have some restrictions around petroleum products that are not properly stored. In other words, say that they need to be properly.
Properly stored, that's, I don't know why we can't just use that language, properly stored. And then you have more of a right to say something to them, right, as a town? And I get that, you know?
And that could go in the permitted uses part.
Mm-hmm. And that's what I was saying.
Properly stored petroleum.
Is that sufficient to just say properly stored?
permitted, permitted use.
Again, that doesn't even make sense since that's a currently permitted use across the state. So if you're going to consider that, there's no point in mentioning it at all.
Well, I hear what you're saying, but I think we have.
I'm not saying that.
We have a, we have a political problem here that I think that might address.
No matter which way you go, it's gonna be wrong.
Well, my point is that there's no point in adding it to permitted uses. If you're trying to do that to cover the political aspect, you would simply remove it and then say it no longer applies. Because in effect, you're not changing much. And if you're adding it to permitted uses outside of the district, you're not changing
Any other thoughts?
How about if we add, for new structures, no storage of petroleum products or hazardous chemicals or materials shall occur within the district? For new structures, that.
I think that's what we're talking about, I don't think that's, I don't think that's fair.
No.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's right.
If somebody's gonna build a new house, they wanna go cut some brush next to the river, leave the five gallon gas can there while they're cutting?
Well, that's not stored though.
Could be if it sits there for a week or two.
That's not stored, that's not stored.
Or months.
I don't, I, what I hear you saying is you wanna just take out 7B? I don't think that's, I don't think that's appropriate either, if that's, if that sounds what you're suggesting, David.
I'm not, that was why my question was to them, because I'm trying to figure out what this does or restricts that is not already restricted by the building. And I think Isabel actually does know that, in that if for some chance something does get allowed to be built there, whether it's through variance or the housing board, et cetera, then that's where that would come into effect. And so if you have to have any sort of legal authority to prevent that storage, then you need to keep it basically the way it is. And if you don't care about that because this should in theory not happen, then you can avoid the political problem and not really change much of anything by removing it. And I'm just trying to throw out options, not.
So Dave, why don't you think it'd be good to say, "Proper" storage? So let's just.
Because that's already in the New Hampshire law.
Well, right.
And people will wanna know, people will wanna have a definition from you as to what's proper. So then you have to define what's proper, which the state has already done.
But, I mean, if we could just refer to that, that's what I was, I don't know what it is.
State law.
State, yeah.
It's whatever state law is.
According to state law.
Yeah, the proper storage.
Proper storage.
Because isn't this still some part is that you want to be able to, if you see somebody doing something that's, you know, 'cause there's all, it doesn't matter what rule there is, people break off, you know? And that's why we now have a code enforcer. So if something is broken, you know, we are able to at least say, you know, or some, or even the state where it says that you're breaking a rule and you need to, you need to fix it, and this is what you need to do. You know, you need to properly store something.
Again, for the, I mean, pray to raise a political issue, again, this is just going to be for new structures. So if I, for instance, if I happen to have a structure right now that's within the district and I accidentally dumped my gas can and it dribbles in to the wetlands, God forbid, I still wouldn't be in violation of this ordinance because my property was grandfathered. So it's just new structures.
Right, and I don't think that got across in the public hearings very well.
I agree with you. Well, look at how we're struggling with it now, so.
Do we wanna do anything here? I'm thinking, I'm thinking we don't wanna do anything just because.
Well, we don't wanna do anything, but at the same time, how are we gonna answer to the people that raised this to begin with?
Well, what I'm thinking is, is, when we're done with this, let's say we don't do anything here, we just leave it. We write up a, we listened to you at the last public hearing and regarding petroleum storage was brought up and.
We found a way to solution.
Yeah, this applies only to new construction and there's no prohibiting the storage of petroleum products for personal use in approved containers according to state law. I mean, you just say that outright as part of the, as part of the selling of this thing.
You probably should just go with the state law, skip the container part, because that could get into a whole different-
The container, it needs to be part of the state law.
Yes.
In the next issue of the great line, the conservation commission has an entry going in, it's gonna be a full-page thing, that are frequently asked questions about the ordinance. And this exact thing and the other issues that were brought up at the public hearing were included in the frequently asked questions part. So people will be able to read about this grandfathering, which we're totally gonna stress, because we agree, we don't think that it came across well enough in the public hearing. So we have a strategy for public education that is really gonna involve us reaching out to every single household in this community. It's gonna be enormous, because we think this is important, but I hear what you were saying, there are so many people in town that we don't know.
Right.
So-
A lot.
So I understand that. So because most people don't end up coming to public hearings, we realize that we have to reach out to them with something that will inform them about this, about this ordinance. So-
Well, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. I'm inclined to leave this alone, I don't know. How does, maybe we should just go down the thing and say, how do you feel about leaving it alone?
I think we should probably try to get it so it's fixed right, so people understand it.
Right.
And don't get all uptight over it.
Right, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Kathy, what do you think?
But what does that mean?
That means probably getting it clarified a little better. A lot better.
Yeah.
Right.
What do you, what do you-
State rules.
What do you, what do you think?
So we're saying we would add language in the permitted use?
Permitted use.
To, and the-
State law.
Yeah.
And the RSA, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
You can come, I'll, I'll get the RSA for it.
Okay, that would be good, yes.
Right, that-
Yeah, I think that would, it would assuage a lot of people.
Yeah, it might, might not. You, you, I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff going on out there that, you know, I know they don't know about, that people are upset.
Yeah, and, and some people are, no matter what you say, they're never gonna be convinced.
Right, some of them aren't gonna, you don't listen to what they say, but some do have good ideas of what's what, that-
I, I agree with, I agree entirely with what you're saying.
And they've been around town a day or two.
Yeah.
It's not just, they just moved in.
Yeah, right. Paul, what do you think?
I'll go along with that.
So adding something in the permitted uses, even though it's not, it's something, okay. And what do you think?
Same idea and refer to the RSA that the state follows.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think we got this nailed? All right, let's move on here before it gets too late. Number three, regulation of docs. Some thought the ordinance duplicates the existing VES regulation of docs, which means citizens would have to deal with two sets of regulations with regard to docs. We believe the state regulations in this regard suffice. Recommendation, any doc or peer structure is defined in NHR RSA Title L, Chapter 42A that is approved by the state under the chapter as amended or under other applicable law should be included in the permitted use section, section six permitted uses. Further, section seasonal docs, both lots and peers, should be deleted from section eight, uses permitted by conditional use permits. So we're gonna back off from the doc language, is what that sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay, no problem there.
Good.
Now-
That was a lot. Geez!
Well, yes. Four, vertical expansion of existing houses. Some members of the public were concerned the ordinance does not allow for vertical expansion of legal non-conforming structures in the district, for example, adding a dormer. Recommendation, delete section five E dot two, which C, which reads, there should be no vertical expansion in the district. Homeowners will be still subject to relevant zoning ordinances. So we're gonna get rid of, or wording about vertical expansion yet.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's good.
No problem. All right, now the last item is a little more detailed and needs a little more discussion. Expansion of primary dwellings on existing non-conforming lots less than two acres in size. And there were three people that brought that up at the public hearing. Concerned with regard to existing lots less than two acres in size, how do we balance the desires of lot owners to expand existing primary structures with the need to protect district wetlands that are within the borders of such lots? Now it's, as you know, current building requires lots of larger than that. But the way the zoning ordinance reads is lots from four to ten acres can be subdivided once, which means if you have a four acre lot with a subdivision frontage, you can subdivide that into two acre lots.
You could.
You could.
If it was created before a certain date. So it's grandfathered in before, if the law was in existence before that provision was adopted.
Okay.
So there's a date for it.
Okay.
If it's before that, it can go at once, if it's after that.
Yeah, so it's a very, it's a very unlikely situation. However, as David pointed out, in the future, you know, we may reduce the lot requirement size, so that may be more of an issue going forward, okay? Okay, important factors to consideration, existing legal non-conforming lots, uses and structures are grandfathered, meaning that those uses and structures may continue as is. If an owner of such lot wishes to expand an existing structure or use, very likely he or she will need to apply to the zoning board for a variance regardless of the enactment of this ordinance. That would be required for expansion beyond the current zoning ordinance, building setbacks in Article four A of the town zoning ordinance, which require the fifty foot setback, as distinguished from a buffer, for primary and accessory structures from rivers, brooks, lakes, or ponds. Regardless the enactment of the ordinance, the State Shoreland Water Quality Protection Act will still apply to minimal standards for wetlands protection, whereas such small lots border such wetlands. However, towns of course may impose more wetland, more protective regulation. In the current draft of this ordinance, lots less than two acres in size must have a seventy-five foot buffer if, if in level one, and a fifty foot buffer in level two. Relief from these requirements is by variance application with the zoning board. The current ordinance draft does not regulate any wetland or surface water less than a quarter acre in size except vernal pools. Undeveloped and natural vegetated buffers provide far more protection to wetlands and surface waters than building setbacks. Recommendations, based on the consideration of the above factors, we conclude that the removal of existing lots less than two acres in size from the ordinance will not significantly reduce the burden on landowners wishing to expand their buildings on these lots because of underlying zoning requirements. Furthermore, such removal would disproportionately reduce protection of affected wetlands. Therefore, we recommend that such lots remain in the district, but in order to provide further relief to such landowners, we recommend that the planning board select one of the following for revision. Number one, allow owners of existing lots less than two acres to apply for a conditional use permit to expand a primary dwelling within either level one or level two wetland district. Leave the buffer requirements as specified. Allow the conditional use permit for this purpose in such lots in level one. And level two provides more flexibility to both homeowners and the town in weighing protection of the wetlands against loosening some of the requirements placed on existing homeowners. Also note that landowners will have the choice to get same relief by variance application. Or two, second option, for existing lots less than two acres, reduce the buffer to fifty feet for both level one and level two lots. As written, the ordinance sets a seventy-five foot buffer for lots level one and fifty foot buffers for level two. This would make the protected wetlands area smaller for existing lots less than two acres in size, and allow lot owners more flexibility to do what they wish on the land that would not thus fall within the district. However, this also means less protection for the affected wetlands and consequently increased risk of damage to wetlands themselves. So the two options, if I may, if I may, if I may paraphrase, one is a conditional use permit under the zoning ordinance, is that correct? And the other option is reducing the buffer sizes for small lots. Is there any discussion on this?
So you gotta reduce it to fifty feet.
That's option two, this.
Option two. And the other would be?
We have some people in the, and you are?
John Collins, Chrisland Hill Road.
Yeah.
I like option two. I just purchased a three-quarter brick lot on Close Bin Bridge Road, and the lot's width is about a hundred and thirty feet. So if it was seventy-five feet, put a house in the septic, it's, it won't, I can't do this. But if I go to the fifty feet, I can get a small house in there with the septic on the other side. So I love option two, fifty foot, following state recommendations, shoreline protection. And that's what I, I was coming here tonight to get the board's recommendation on whether I should, can I apply for a builder permit right now, before this is even voted on? Cause I wanted to go in on the house, or because I know, you know, a week later, after I bought the property, I find out it's gonna go to seventy-five feet.
Well, this, this ordinance, we're gonna have a public hearing, a second public hearing in October, and then it's gonna go as a warrant article in the spring. So nothing's gonna happen before the spring.
So is it okay for me to apply for a builder permit now?
Yes.
You don't have the concrete in yet?
No. I just asked for a driveway permit, so I'm waiting on that. But it's okay to go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, sure, go ahead.
But I like option two.
Okay, thank you for your input, David.
So until this gentleman spoke and gave his situation, which this may or may not work for, listening to those options and the description just before that of the purpose being that the natural vegetative buffer is the important part, not the setback, for existing homes expanding, which is really what that part was talking about, not new construction, for existing homes expanding, would the easy way to look at that be if they are not changing the natural vegetative buffer size? So for example, if they're adding onto the side of their house, but all they're doing is taking some of their lawn. That might be one way to also consider that in a much, probably easier to stomach method for a lot of folks. That would arguably be easier for most folks and also do a better job of protection than even option two.
David, I'm sorry, I'm not following you. So you're, this is, are you arguing for option one or for?
Neither, I'm suggesting another possibility that, that kind of takes the advantages for each side from both. The purpose being that the natural vegetative buffer is the important part. And so if there's currently not a natural vegetative buffer, because say if their lawn, or they're expanding to where their driveway currently is with the garage, if they're doing that, they're not going to change or affect any kind of natural vegetative buffer. So that might be the way to permit and allow it without having to change your buffer size? Or without having to go down the-
Road of tons.
Tons of variances option.
What about a CUP though? Cause that would, that would give the planning board an opportunity to discuss the plans with the, the owner for expansion, which would be option one.
I, I'm not suggesting the exact way to, to do it, I'm bringing it up, is that to me sounds like a, a logical way to look at making it easier and more protective at the same time. However, that process is to allow it or not, that is a different question.
So the-
I still don't understand.
I don't either.
I don't understand what you're saying. So this, this refers to, to non-conforming existing lots?
Correct.
So John, you wouldn't fall into this, cause there's no, there's no, oh, oh, your lot is existing.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, okay.
The lot's existing, but it doesn't have an existing structure.
Right, okay, so say it again, in a different way.
So I, I, because he spoke at the previous one, and this is one of his issues, I will use my neighbor, Mike Jettie, as an example.
Yeah.
On one side of this house, he has lawn, on the other side of this house, he has driveway. And so if he is asking to expand his house to either his lawn or his driveway without cutting down additional trees or changing the natural vegetative buffer, that would seem a reasonable way to do it without having to go to a smaller buffer overall for everybody on a smaller conforming lot, such as option two would do, for example.
But I don't understand why option number one would not ultimately be better for him. You know, because he's gonna have to go before the planning board anyway to talk about the plans for expansion of his house, isn't that correct? Don't you require that?
Not today, right?
No.
I don't think so.
No, I think today he could go down there and add on, do whatever he wants, right?
The only time we had any building permit is for the first new residential structure.
Cause like the zoning ordinance said it has the fifty foot setbacks. So as long as he could stay within the fifty foot setbacks, he wouldn't need a permit. But if he went outside that fifty foot setbacks, then he would need to get a variance from the CUP.
From the water, or?
From the water, cause the water, if it's on the river, the river has a setback already in the ordinance.
Right, right. Sting, correct?
Also from his neighbors and from the road too, I think.
And the road and from the neighbors, it's fifty feet on all sides for lots less than, or two acres and less. So that's from the zoning board. That's, that's already in our zoning ordinance.
Right, so we wouldn't have anything to do with that.
No. So that's why option two is to go with what the existing ordinance is for two acres and less.
And leave it as is.
And leave it as is, but I believe the, the other option provides more flexibility a little bit if it isn't within the setback, but I think it would still have to go for-
Zoning.
For, go to the zoning board, even when the CUP reassessed. But the CUP is the planning board.
Right.
Correct. I mean, I, that, this is my, was my point, was it looked to me like for number one, they have to go to two boards.
Right.
Number two is- Potential.
One.
Potentially, but still, but that's where, so, you know, would, would have to go to two boards instead of, whereas number two, you're not having to get the conditional use permit. Right. Which is a little simpler for people. And I'm sorry, David, I don't, I, I know what you're talking about, I'm just imagining people coming in with diagrams and saying, look, I'm only doing this part, and I, I think it would be hard for us to- Especially if they say, that's my lawn, and then they quickly mode out a section and say, that's my lawn.
Fair point.
But anyway, yeah.
People don't think that way.
People don't do that, right?
No, you just do it and ask for forgiveness. No, you just do it and ask for forgiveness.
Easy now.
Show me comments.
Well, I think option number two is a good option, but it's also taken away some of what the conservation commission wants to do as far as the buffers.
Correct.
Well, the question is, how impactful is this? How many two-acre lots and how, and I think if you look at it, it's not...
There's quite a few.
Well, yeah, but if they're existing, if they're existing...
Existing, yes.
I mean, it's only fellows like John over there.
Again, this, this applies only to...
He's going to, he's going to have his place up, but he's going to turn around here.
By the way.
This is specifically for existing houses and expansion is what we're talking about. So it's not like this is a grandmother thing. So that's why it needs to be...
Existing lots.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. Thanks for clarifying.
Second option for all existing lots.
Yeah.
And if it's not built, option two would be if there's a lawn of two acres or less. So it says right there, it's existing law. It's not if there's a building. So it would allow for that.
Right. So do you have other comments?
I believe that I'd like number two.
I think we have a, we have a consensus here.
I think number two, yes. I, yes, because you don't have to go to two boards and it... I realize we are losing some of the buffer, but I don't know how many, how many lots we're talking about. Yeah, this is...
And you favored two, Paula. You favored the second one. Yeah, so do I, so.
Okay.
I think it's a done deal. Are there any other issues that people noted at the public hearing they want to bring up?
You typed, Russell, you typed up the minutes. I'm sorry, I did not get through all of the minutes. Was there anything else in there that wasn't...
These are the major issues?
Yes, I mean, from what I recall, they were. I'm sorry to put you on the spot there.
There was a couple of smaller minor issues that I think. One is how the map would get amended.
Oh.
I think that was a minor issue that was brought up. And then another one is how we would determine the edge of the wetland. I think that was Nancy's, and then the other one was Dave's, about how the map would get amended. And I don't know if we want to put language in that, any ordinance, and how we're going to do that. Because I think state law tells us how we amend the map.
Yeah, I'm not inclined to touch that one.
Okay. I'm just saying, those were the other things I remember being brought up.
Yeah. Well, thank you for remembering that.
Well, you asked.
That's why I see it.
You have a good memory.
Yes.
My, my question on the, the map part, the, the, you're correct about state law telling us how to amend the major wetlands map, because that is considered the definition of them for the ordinance. And so it is part of the ordinance. The other wetlands map that exists, however, is not part of the ordinance. And so I understand what Sue Roman said in response at the public hearing, which was that the language is the definition, not the map. But whether that is true or not, and I assume it is, having a second map that may or may not match those definitions is going to immediately confuse the public. So I would strongly recommend that something be considered for either how that, the land gets updated or how often, or not have that defined matter in that language.
Are you referring, Dave, to the, the map that she had on the...
I think it's the Level Two district map, because the Level One is the rivers and all the delineated wetlands. For Level Two, it was brought up as more of the description of the wetlands, and they already had some of them on there, but not all of them. That's what I remember.
Yeah. The Level Two, basically the Level Two map, because that's not definitive as a map. And so if someone goes, "Oh, I'm okay because it's not here," and then points to that from confusion, then you're most likely going to be granting down whatever they are saying, "Well..."
Yeah, the map goes along with that, because we can't get a map with fine enough detail.
Well, right, but if someone is looking at the map and saying that that says that it's okay, chances are, I don't know about ours, EDA, at the current point in time, but chances are the housing authority or even the courts will agree that, well, you did make an appropriate effort and you should be allowed to do this sort of thing. We've seen cases like that in all kinds of different places for, whether it's wetlands or other kinds of other ways. So I would suggest that, that the board look at specifically either a way to update that whenever things are noticed or found and have language for that, noting, of course, that it is still a reference map, or just not have that map so that there isn't confusion.
I, I would just add that the ordinance is pretty clear that anybody building within District One or District Two requires a soils engineer or a wetland scientist to come out and actually delineate, find that edge, and not leave it to something like somebody's interpretation of language or a map. So, you know, that, that would be part of somebody's process in the future.
I, well, I'll tell you, when you start getting into that sort of stuff, having a wetland scientist come out and look at the land, everything in town is wet. I mean, well, you start taking and, I ran into this down on the silver farm down there. There's a field right there, okay? Wetland scientist comes out here, this is a hayfield, digs in it, and they claim that's wetlands.
No.
Yes, this is what happened down there. And so this could possibly happen. You should have a, like, if you're going to have a buffer off the Blackwater River 100 feet, and you have that wetland scientist come out, that's gray dirt, 150 feet off the river, they're going to classify that as wetlands. Guarantee it. Been there, done that. So as far as, you know, if you're going to start having a buffer and then have a wetland scientist come check stuff, and you're 150 feet and it's wet, shows the, the dirt will show it, the, you know, it's a...
It's a combination of soils plus vegetation. And so...
If you've got ferns and gray dirt...
It depends on the fertile type.
Yes, so here we go. Where you're, you're taking away land that is buildable by doing that.
But the ordinance only protects the 100 feet. So if somebody says at 105 feet, you know, that it's wet, the ordinance protects up to 100 feet.
That's guaranteed.
Well, you know...
It's in, it's in the ordinance. And typically, the edge of the wetlands is defined by the high water mark. So that gives folks like us an opportunity to figure out, you know, where that 100 feet starts, and you can measure it out.
Yeah, but if you're at the high water mark, is that where the 100 feet's going to start?
Yep.
So, so, so if you're at 105 feet, you've got a high water mark at 100 feet, where are you going?
You're okay at 105 feet. You know, because the edge of...
Right.
He's saying that the wetland, not from the edge of the river would be the, the edge of the wetland. So it would actually be another 100-foot buffer beyond that.
Pass what the wetland scientist figured out. If he's digging, if he's checking that land, you're already 100 feet from the river. He's got his little shovel out there, and you've got gray dirt with ferns. They're going to classify that as wetlands. And I guarantee you that because that's happened to me. And that's a guarantee. USDA.
David?
Been there.
So I, I, I think that's a, a separate conversation that's probably worth people having.
Yeah.
However, the comment that I was bringing up, actually, Chris nailed perfectly in the problem. And that is, she's said that the definitions, for example, are based on, well, if you're going to go do something, you have to have a wetland scientist go to any of the actual edge. If someone says, "I did my due diligence by looking for a listing of a wetland. It's not on the map, and it happened to be a dry period during that time, so they didn't think their land was wet." You completely missed it because they're not looking at the language for a known wetland or something that's on the map. And they're saying, "It's not there." I'm okay. So I think you even need to have a, a good way to continually, constantly update that map for people with problems like that. That, that's all my, my comment there. It's not about where the edges actually are.
And only the worry that I would have is, is doing what we do for work. One minute, you know, there, of course, there's different things that show wetlands, just like we talked dirt, ferns. But I'll tell you, there's times that, that you'll come in and you'll be on, you'll walk a lot, and unfortunately, we haven't really had good dry periods lately anyways. And, but it doesn't take much where then it, it, it can change, or it maybe just didn't drain very well there. But it doesn't mean that it's, you know, that it should be classified as wetlands. And, and that, and that's what worries me, and, and that's where I would go along with exactly what Addie's saying is, fortunately or unfortunately, what we do for work, that can happen, just like that. And I don't feel that that's always the real science of what that, you know, if that's wetlands or not. So...
It, it's, that's exactly right. Because I'll tell you what, I cleared down there, silver farm, making another field, okay? Dry as a bone, I logged that thing, there's not a, a rut in that from a skitter, the shear, or anything. Thing weighs 35 tons, ought to leave a mark. Did not leave a mark. Went to go to stump that, the USDA comes in with their shovel. I had a quarter of an acre of that where it was just, and I logged it in the springtime, and they claimed it was wetlands by doing your tests with your soil sample, not one, but two of them. Had a quarter of an acre out of 10 acres that you're not touching the stumps. And it's like, really? There's no sign of, of any marks or anything, or no mud or anything, but it showed up in the dirt? That's how they base it, is by the dirt. And it doesn't matter what you got for ferns, had blackberry bushes growing or whatever, and you're not touching that.
Isabel? Just a, a quick comment for Addie and Marlo. For your timber operations, this ordinance leaves that stuff up to you guys in terms of doing best management practices. So that really doesn't impact you.
Well, what concerns, what concerns me is, you know, at some point, you know, I look at the, you know, I've raised my, raising our, our family, you know, our boys are at the age where, you know, they're purchasing property, they're building homes. And I would hate to see us restrict too much property to not make it affordable for people to live, you know, in that town. And that, that's what concerns me. And that's where, when you start talking wetland scientists and, and, you know, you, you run, you can run down that road, just like we were talking about. And I appreciate that, Isabel, and, yes, I saw that they did, you guys did a great job removing that part. But as we have a lot of rules and regulations we have to follow anyways. But we've also seen how much fun that can be, yeah, on that side. And I, I just, I just don't want to see our town become so regulated, you know. I think there's a lot of goodness in this. There's a lot of good stuff in here. But if we over-regulate and make it that, you know, somebody can't raise their family or, or build a home, that's, that's my concern.
Okay, I guess I'm confused about that the stuff that you're talking about happened without this ordinance. Right, that you, what, you had some...
Oh, yeah.
Right, so that's what I, I'm just saying, and so what?
Yeah, it's sort of a, it's sort of a secondary discussion here. It's not, we're sort of...
We're sort of off the map.
Well, just the wetland scientist part of things. I mean, it's like, it, it's fine, but it's not really because they can take it and draw the line further.
Are you reacting to the discussion of updating it and having a wetland scientist?
Right, I don't, I don't agree with that because if they go out and start digging with their little shovel, and they got, you got ferns, you, you got, you already come up, you 100-foot buffer, and, you know, if you wanted to build a house or something, say, you only have two acres or five acres, and, and they, they find that your dirt is wetlands, you know, it shows high water table, wetlands, whatever.
But that, they were already involved in establishing the district.
They, they've established it, okay?
Right.
Okay, so, so here we are, you're on your 100-foot district, okay? Now we're going to start, they, they, you've got high water mark at 105 feet.
But when are they going to come out to evaluate? Where, where this was talking about updating the...
If they're making you do this, right, if they're going to make you do this, get a wetland scientist to check your...
For, for building.
Your building of land, it's going to take away. That's where...
But don't we already have that frequently?
No.
DES? How many times are, this was like the driveway regs, how many times do we...
Well, I remember the Kimball property down there, and there's a lot of wetland. And they had a wetland scientist come out and flagged that whole thing.
Right.
And he said he wanted to build his house here. I said, "Fine. You just make sure you have to be so far off that, off that, that flagging there," right? So it, it did get, they had a wetland scientist go in there and flag that whole thing.
Yeah, it's already a requirement. I mean, I've had to do the same thing.
Right.
Yeah, it's already a requirement. So I, I, I'd like to end this discussion because I don't think it's...
Oh, oh, yeah, this particular discussion. I had one more comment from the ordinance, but...
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't want to, I don't, that, did you address his point or...
What's that?
Well, we're going to table that for now. I don't, I don't think we're going to touch that one right now.
If it comes up again, and they're all talking to me, we'll have to do something with it.
So there was, Kim Fortune brought up the thing about the water rights agreement with Concord.
That's, those who want me to jump that.
And that was, I mean, and basically, nobody, nobody knew.
Well, my feeling is that that's not in the...
The select board's working on that.
Okay.
That's not in the purvey of the planning board. That's a select board issue, in my opinion.
Or didn't we already have a lawyer review the, the ordinance? Who was...
Oh, the ordinance, yeah.
Yes.
But that is so far outside the purview of the ordinance. It's completely overrated.
All right, so, but it's covered.
And that's gone to the town's attorney. So they're looking at it.
Okay, great. That was, that was the one other thing that we all basically said. I have no idea. Okay. That was all I had.
A couple unrelated things, but that's it.
Do you?
Well, they're not related to the, to the ordinance.
Well, let me just add one thing. What my intention is, is tomorrow morning, I'm going to re, redo this. And I'll send a copy to Isabel and Sue Roman and you, and, and whatever comments you have, and get it back to me the same day tomorrow, the afternoon. Yes?
Craig, a, a quick point. It was not the WCC that submitted these recommendations. It was a subcommittee of this board.
Right.
The planning board and the WCC. So, and Sue Roth was involved with that.
Right.
So...
She made that point to me this morning.
Maybe she should get the comments, too.
Let's say that again.
Maybe she should get your comments.
Yes, yes, I will. I, I don't have any problem with that. I talked with her this morning about that. So that's the plan of action. And I hopefully get that to you.
Well, we got, got about a week.
Yeah, well, I want to, I want, I don't want this thing hanging around. You can... Anything else?
So my stuff's not wetlands ordinance related. It's just a couple of quick questions.
Yeah.
Because we missed doing the whole planning board meeting last time. We were supposed to set a date for the CUP meeting, or the first CIP meeting. And I'm assuming we're going to do that at some point in October. Do we know, do we have a date we want to do that?
Um, we, we don't have a date. I don't know. Give me a date.
That's up to I work. So it's whenever you have it, I'll be there.
Well, Paula and I are on this thing.
And I wanted to hopefully get it in the grapevine for the upcoming issue to say, to ask for volunteers and...
Yeah, let's say, okay, so the grapevine comes out in early October, let's say...
Which is not very far away.
No.
I know, I keep thinking my God is there.
Let's say the second week in October.
Second week? Do you want it, what, what day?
What, what's a good day for you? Yours seem to be the most.
Wednesday is my, is the toughest day for me.
All right, so give me another good day.
October. Uh, I got, senior lunch is on the seventh. I can't do that. Sixth or seventh is out. Uh, we can go either, either Monday, Tuesday, or... We can go either, either Monday, Tuesday, or Friday. The eighth, the fourth, or the fifth.
Tuesdays. And let's say, let's say Thursday, the fourth. Is that right? No, that's...
No.
The seventh.
The seventh. Thursday, the seventh.
Thursday, no. I can't do, I can't do...
All right, let's say Friday, the eighth.
Friday, the eighth.
Friday, the eighth. Let's do it at the town hall at like nine or 10.
And during the day?
During the day, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's okay.
I can put that on the schedule.
That's okay, I, I can do good with that.
The other thing was, I wanted to move forward with the fee schedule public hearing update, but I have one comment. Now that we have the zoning inspector for site review applications, do we want to include that fee into it for the inspection? And as a condition of all site reviews, there's a secondary inspection after it, where the zoning officer goes in and reviews to make sure that they follow the conditions. So adding $75 to that fee already covers it.
That sounds right to me. Rather than having multiple fees, just they put it on the ball.
It's either you would do it then, or you would say you have to do the site inspection. This is up to the board, so whether you want them to do that inspection afterwards or not.
Can you say that one more time?
Yeah, yeah.
So we got the zoning officer who's supposed to make sure that people are following the site plans and...
As they're constructing, as they're digging, as they're building.
So this is to go in and say, "We did this site plan review." He's coming out, say, six, seven months later to say, "Hey, did you follow the conditions of the permit?"
Yeah.
Yes, no, yes, cool, we're done.
Yeah.
And that's it. But that still costs the town $75 to send him out.
Okay. So you want to know if we want to pay him?
No, that should be...
Put it, put it as part of the application fees?
Yes.
Or put in after to say that this inspection, once approved, you have to do it, it's up to you.
Well, it should be paid for by the, by the landlord.
Well, no, it is, it is going to be, but, but he's asking, do we pay it? Do we, more or less, when these people come in and fill an application out and they get approved, there's a certain amount of fee that they have to pay. I would say you just do it all at once, because I think it'd be less confusing for the people, personally. I mean, we're not talking hundreds of dollars, we're talking $75, so. I, in, in more, less confusing, "Oh my God, did I get that fee?" Because he just went out and blah, blah, so. I'd say, that's my vote.
So we want to update the review by 70.
Paul says that.
Yeah.
Kathy?
Yes.
Okay.
Done deal.
Got it. And we're closing the meeting and...
So, so...